So, dear colleagues, now we have two o'clock here time, and we are ready to start our special session. The title of session is "Role of Science and Innovation of the Recovery in Ukraine", because the question of development of science and innovation for Ukraine is very important, because it's crucial for very highly developed country. And Ukraine, we wish in the future to see as a highly development country. We will have very interesting session and very interesting discussion. We invite top speakers, representatives of European Commission, representatives of National Academy of Science of Ukraine, representative of Ministry of Science Education of Ukraine, and also we have representatives of different organization, international organization, which highly involve in support Ukraine. And today we will have opportunity to discuss and to share information, what will be the next steps, what current situation. And we have only one hour, a little bit more than one hour. And after this, we will have continue our conference, nano technology and nano materials. That's why I will start discussion from the first our speaker, it's representative of Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine, Grigorj Mozhalevich. Are you with us? And I will ask you to share information, what is current state of science and innovation in Ukraine? How did it change during war period? Maybe some problems issue which faced scientists in Ukraine? What does Ukraine do to support scientists? What will be the next steps? And what is the strategy to develop innovation and science in infrastructure in Ukraine? Please take your floor.
Thank you. You listen me? Do you see my presentation? Yes?
We can see you and hear your presentation. Presentation we see and can hear you, but presentation not in full screen mode.
Maybe.
Okay, you can continue.
Now. Okay. Thank you for giving me the floor. It's my pleasure to address the participants of the conference. Today focus of my presentation will be on the current state and future perspective of paradise system in Ukraine and some answer for your questions. Ukraine has a wide network of research institution and high education institutions with developed infrastructure for making supplemental and applied research. We have 318 high education institutions and more than 300 research institution in our landscape. State budget of research activities is allocated among Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine, National Academy of Science of Ukraine, National Research Foundation of Ukraine and other academies of Science of Ukraine and other ministries. You see in this slide some numbers of budget. The Russian Federation Full Scale Vision of Ukraine in 2022 has presented lot of challenges of Ukraine research and innovation system. As for now, we know about 1,443 buildings that belong to 177 research institution and high education institutions of Ukraine were damaged or destroyed. Currently, the cost of restoring infrastructure of the scientific sector of Ukraine is manually estimate at more than 1.3 billion United States dollars. It is estimated that approximately up to 12% of the researchers have left professional activity or were relocated to another country. Near 30% of Ukrainian researchers are forced to work online now. You can see on the slide damage building of some of research institution and high education institution. Our ministry some of this building in the right down of this slide. We update the strategic priorities and goals of the Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine in 2024. This plan by 2027 was approved in March of this year. Among nine priorities, the document includes research and innovation development, defining K tasks to be achieved in the research and innovation sector, throws four strategic objectives and key initiative, as you see on this slide. Also, the Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine in cooperation with the Ministry of Digital Transformation has developed a draft strategy for digital development for innovative activities of Ukraine for the period up to 2030. According to the draft strategy, the state should become the initiator of innovators, determine the country needs for innovators, contribute to strengthening of the Ukrainian innovations ecosystem to solve international problems and overcome global challenges. In the frame of ministry action, big attention is taken for supporting researchers who continue to work in Ukraine despite the extremely difficult conditions. Every year, we provide awards and scholarships for best researchers of Ukraine. As you may see on this slide, these awards and scholarships for granting of the best young researchers have been implemented in this year. To support Ukrainian researchers, we pay great attention to international cooperation. There are 82 international agreements with different countries on scientific and technology cooperation, which provide possibility to implement joint bilateral project. You can see on this slide the number of joint bilateral research projects implemented with other countries in 2024. In particular, on the next slide, you see list of the Ukrainian institution that carry out joint R&amp;D projects under the bilateral international agreements concerning nanotechnologies and nanomaterials. This maybe 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 projects with 4 country in bilateral project and some project with neighbor. We are deeply appreciate support of European Commission under Horizon 2020 External Aid. Thankful to this, we have already provide two competitive selections. And here you see some numbers. Also, the list of the Ukrainian institutions that carry out projects concerning nanotechnologies and nanomaterials. As you can see, 7 projects from the first selections, first all maybe, and 4 projects from the second. On October 2021, Ukraine signed next European Union Framework Program Horizon Year, and it opened new wide opportunities for our country. As for August 2024, Ukrainian organizations have signed 174 grant agreements under the Horizon Europe program, amounting to a total of more than 47 million euros. A total of 241 Ukrainian institutional organizations participates in this program. The success rate of Ukrainian proposals under the Horizon Europe program is almost 16% for now. In this slide, you see the Ukrainian participants of joint project under Horizon Europe program concerning nanotechnologies and nanomaterials. The strength of the Ukrainian participation in Horizon Europe, we have built Horizon Europe National Contact Point Network in 12 cities from 10 regions of Ukraine. You can see in this slide what the city in what part of our country have a national contact point. Coming to end, I would like to send one more time for all measures and support European Commission provides to Ukraine, that's extremely important for us. And to Maria Kristina Russo in person, if you please to me now. Thank you, dear colleagues, for your attention. Thank you organization, the team for this conference.
Thank you a lot. And if someone in our conference hall have question to representative of Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine, you can ask.
We have question, Kyiv National University, Andrey Sijuk.
Okay, please.
We have such example, when new samples came from abroad. Question was how to test them for components, which come chemical elements were constituting. And the problem was that Ukraine still doesn't have structural vision, how to develop this segment of activity like science that should be of course joined with all levels of social life being and to organize some measurements that are complex. It should involve a lot of elements, including industrial plants. And for example, I can say such organization like.
Okay, your question.
The question is, question is, does Minister have any vision how to organize science and encourage the activity? If you gonna talk about some miracle that happened to other countries being destructed after.
Develop science in Ukraine, maybe you have some strategy? Because I know that now Ministry and Ministry of Digital Transformation of Ukraine prepare innovation strategy for Ukraine. As maybe science also is part of this strategy. So maybe you have some action plan, have support and develop science in Ukraine very shortly.
If the minister have a strategic plan. Strategic plan approved from 2024 to 2027. In this slide, details of this plan. They have 4 chart, charters. When you see is research infrastructure in Ukraine is systematically developed. It's about R&amp;Ds, maximally focuses on solving global scientific challenges and specific knowledge intensive tests in defense, security, economy and Ukrainian society. Next, about research staff's potential is capable and the research staff carries out high level quality research and ensures the creation of competitive research developments and innovative products. And next charters about research square funding system and about multi-channelled and efficient contribution to the providing of quality of research at various levels. And details of this strategic plan, you see on our official site of Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine. About science, maybe 20 or 30 pages in this plan. And now we have details. Plan with dates about every task. But this, now we have a draft of these details.
Thank you a lot.
Thank you very much. Ян Муржукраїнською.
We must.
2 секунды.
Have quite a lot speakers. We have time only for question you ask. And sorry, you can put other question in the chat. So now we are moving to our next speaker. And it's very pleasure for me to invite representatives of European Commission, Maria Kristina Russo. She represent Director General for Research and Innovation. And we kindly thanks for European Commission for all action which they provide. And I hope in the future continue to provide to support science, innovation, education process in Ukraine. Thank you a lot and please Maria Kristina Russo take your floor.
Yes, thank you so much. Good afternoon, we already met each other in the morning. And can you hear me? Yes. So I am really very, very pleased to speak in this session on the role of science and innovation in the reconstruction of Ukraine. And the reason why I'm very pleased is that I was leading the European Union Ministerial delegation in Sendai last year at the G7 meeting, where we as European Union have put forward on the agenda of the G7 Ministry for Research Innovation, the importance of us, the G7 countries, including the European Union, to mobilize for supporting the reconstruction of Ukraine. And I would like to focus my intervention on this policy dimension, because I see that you have, we have online also Igor Taranov, who is the head of the Horizon Europe department in here. Good afternoon Igor. And this is a department which is funded by the EU. And Igor can then address more specific questions and issues if needed. So let me say that, that as I mentioned this morning, we in the European Union have the strongest priority to support Ukraine. And we have done from the beginning of this awful illegal invasion of Russian Ukraine. And in the Department of Science and Technology, which I have the honor to be leading beforehand on international cooperation and now on the industrial research, we've been immediately very active in first of all stopping any support to Russian participation to the Horizon Europe program. And that is something important that I want to mention here, because we did it immediately. And secondly, to put in place a range of measures in order to support the Ukrainian researchers and especially to support the Ukrainian accession to the Horizon Europe program, which as I mentioned this morning is the biggest multilateral program in the world. And the Director General already gave some figures on the results of the participation of Ukraine to the Horizon Europe program. And Igor can say more. What I want to say is that we wanted to really enhance the potential that research and innovation has in order to support the reconstruction of Ukraine. And we did that at the last G7, which took place in Sendai, Sendai, Japan. For those of you that do not know, Sendai is a city which has region which has been heated by different earthquakes. And there is at the level of the UN, what we call the Sendai Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction, which was adopted in 2015, lasted until 2030, which highlights some examples and way forward in order to prevent and support the reconstruction after disasters. Now research is embedded into these different elements. And we EU, with then the support of the US, Canada, Japan and the EU members of the G7, have been very strong to say that taking inspiration on what was done in Sendai, we needed to mobilize our forces to use research also for the reconstruction of Ukraine. Obviously, through research and innovation, we cannot cover the different aspects of the reconstruction of your wonderful country, but we can do a lot. And the work that we are promoting in the framework of the G7 is to really promote the best examples, see what has been done in other regions such as Sendai and pull together the different members of the G7, be them from the EU or from Japan, Canada and US, in order to do the same, in order to work and to use the different instruments in research innovation for supporting the reconstruction of Ukraine. And I would conclude, because I don't want to take too long, by recalling that the European Union adopted this year the so-called Ukraine facility, which has a budget of 50 billion, which is an instrument which is aimed at supporting Ukraine in its reconstruction until 2027. And although, I mean, in the, in the, in the facility plan, it is, it is still open, there is not a specific reference or envelope for research innovation in this context, certainly the funds which have been allocated by the EU in this context can be used to support, to mobilize research and innovative solution to support the reconstruction of Ukraine. With that, I would like to conclude by saying that in the EU, we've been very keen in promoting the role of research innovation for supporting Ukraine. And we will continue to be keen to support any action in this direction. You can count, count on us in Brussels. And of course, you can also count on the Horizon Europe office that we set up in Ukraine. Thank you very much again. It has been for me a pleasure and an honor to participate to this important conference. And thanks to all participants and to the organizers.
Thank you a lot. We before the special session have forum of connection and we get the question from our participants. We have one question which I can read. It's about future plans. Do, one moment, I will found it. If European Commission plans to, in the future, to open special call for support, develop Ukrainian innovation ecosystem? I mean about the question about infrastructure projects.
Yes, I mean, we already have in Horizon Europe different actions which specifically target Ukraine. And I said again, the colleague from the Horizon Europe office can, can provide more element on that. And we do indeed envisage to continue to have specific actions on Ukraine. For example, we discussed this morning about nano technology. And I presented the activities in the field of advanced materials, which are a priority for the Commission now. And we are also envisaging to have some flagship action in this context.
Thank you a lot, Kristina Russo. And now we are moving to our next speaker.
With great pleasure, we would like to invite our next speaker, academician Anatoly Zagorodny, President of the National Academy of Science of Ukraine. Please take your floor.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, it's a great honor and pleasure for me to welcome the participants of the 12th International Conference Nano Technologies and Nano Materials on behalf of the National Academy of Sciences of Ukraine. I am glad that the Institute of Physics of our Academy is traditionally the initiator and organizer of this important scientific forum. I thank the organizers for the invitation and for the opportunity to inform you briefly about the role of the National Academy of Sciences of Ukraine in the development of military technologies as well as technologies for eliminating the damage caused to the environment during the war in Ukraine. First, I would like to point out that the research and development for the defense and the security of Ukraine is the highest priority of our Academy. We deal with this issue since the very beginning of the Russian-Ukrainian war. In 2015, the National Academy of Sciences of Ukraine launched its own target defense research program. Since then, our scientists have completed about 250 developments. Some of them have already been implemented, the rest have been tested. Scientists of the Academy also have carried out many other defense research, in particular within the framework of the state target defense program for the development of missile weapons. Of course, for security reasons, I can, can discuss the details and will mention only some of our results. For example, our research were used to modernize and create new anti-aircraft missile systems of various ranges, repair and modernize armored vehicles, restore military aircraft engines, design highly exclusively artillery shells, develop millimeter range radar, create and improve unmanned aircraft complex Spectator M. Our successes include anti-drone guns, a hydrogen energy converter as a source of autonomous electric power for unmanned aerial vehicles, elements of artificial intelligence in unmanned robotic system, simulation complexes for training drone operators, devices for reducing the sound level of a shot from small arms, hydrodynamic substantiation of promising types of missile ships for the naval forces of Ukraine, digital intelligent language and information system and knowledge basis for the analysis of weapons, military equipment and ammunition. On the basis of our institute, there is a training center for pilots of unmanned aerial vehicles certified under the Army of Drones project of the Ministry of Digital Transformation of Ukraine. Our scientists created the base for the training of military diver welders at the diving school at the Armed Forces of Ukraine and introduced technologies for protective coating of concrete and metal surfaces to increase their operational reliability in seawater and salt fog. Another important direction of our work is the study of physical and mechanical properties of fragments of Russian weapons such as cruise ballistic and aeroballistic missiles, air-to-air missile blocking ammunition and ammunition for unmanned aerial systems, protective projectiles for solar fire system. These studies make it possible to obtain new information about technological solutions and consider the possibility of creating similar materials and technologies for the Ukrainian defense industry. In the field of military medicine, I can mention the creation of new biomaterials for the restoration of bone tissue. the creation of dressing materials and combined means of stopping arterial bleeding, the creation of technology for low-temperature storage of donor blood, and many others. In addition, the institutes of our academy provide practical assistance to individual brigades on the frontline, including helping to improve drone control system, developing new electronic warfare systems. Now, a few words about the contribution of the National Academy of Sciences of Ukraine to environmental restoration. Unfortunately, Russia's war against Ukraine has already caused a large-scale ecological disaster on the territory of our country. Natural step areas were destroyed on large territories as well as forest plantations. Soils also suffer from the way and demand them as the world-famous Ukrainian germs. According to experts' estimates, about a third of the agricultural land has been affected by the war, and the losses of the national agricultural sector have exceeded thirty billion of US dollars. We consider it inadmissible to rely on the natural restoration of war-damaged soils because this will take about a hundred years. Therefore, the scientists of our academy offer their own developments for the accelerated restoration of Ukrainian soils. For example, amongst the proposals of geochemists is an object-oriented programme for assessing the impact of military technogenic load from hostilities on the general state of the ecosystem and forecasting possible trends in the development of process in soils during the next ten years. Based on agronomically useful strains with high biotechnological potential, our microbiologists have created a collection of microorganisms that will improve biological nitrogen fixation, phosphorus mobilization, biological protection of plants against stress factors, and simulate the productivity of phytozoosis. Our scientists have developed a unique, highly effective composition for detoxication, restoration, protection, and nutrition of soils using microbiological preparations, ecologically safe, multi-component metabolic bio-preparations and mineral complexes. These developments are designed to detoxify and restore soil territory and increase the profitability of agricultural crops. Biologists proposed to use special bio-indicators, bio-indicated plants to identify plants of contamination with carcinogen TNT and HICSEN and to identify minefields and highly productive plant species in the full cycle of photoremediation of soils. Our biologists developed a granular microbial preparation for quick and effective destruction of ecological hazard dose, multi-component solid waste of animal and plant origin. It is promising for my remediation of ecosystem in the zone of ecological disaster in general and Kahovka ecocide in particular. In order to rehabilitate polluted areas and immediately obtain products for renewable energy sources, biologists suggested growing appropriate varieties of plants on polluted lands. Portable biosensor analyzer have also been developed to determine water and soil contamination by organic and inorganic pollutants and to monitor the state of the environment after the terrorist attack at the Kahovka hydropower plant. Now, our scientists continue to collect and analyze information about negative changes in soil quality indicators and soil recovery trends. We are also closely monitoring the consequences of the Kahovka disaster and development proposal for the minimization. For this purpose, an appropriate working group was created last year, immediately after the tragedy. The working group takes care of a wide range of issues, including the modeling of the consequences of inundation of territories and the identification of zones that may be most negatively affected. The possible consequences of the destruction of the Kahovka dam for the Parisian power plant were also analyzed. The impact of the environment, the impact of biodiversity, water resources, and ecosystem was assessed. Social, economic consequences are analyzed. We are currently developing recommendations for the government regarding the future prospect of the Kahovka reservoir and the various scenarios of its reconstruction. By the way, very recently, scientists of the National Academy of Sciences of Ukraine published a bilingual Ukrainian English review, "The Kahovka Reservoir Disaster: Evidence from Satellite Images", which included the results of a remote study of Kahovka disaster with analysis of its consequences based on the data of optical and radar images of space vehicles. This review is available for free online. Of course, what I talked about is not even the tip of the iceberg, but I hope I managed to convey to you that the academy vastly helps its country and its army. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, also for your valuable contribution in our conference. And is it very interesting that now it's not secret that many Ukrainian scientists have left Ukraine and now abroad? Does the academy have a plan or strategy to get these scientists back?
Of course, it's very important to do our best to initiate our colleagues to come back to Ukraine. But the most important things today for us is to support Ukrainian scientists who are still working in Ukraine. This is the main, this is the main task of our academy. Of course, we are very interested to give back our colleagues from abroad, and I hope that we shall give some positive response to this. Of course, we are very interested, I repeat, we are very interested to give back our colleagues. But concerning the special conditions, I can repeat that our main task now is to support those who are still working in Ukraine.
Yes, I agree that now these scientists who still work in Ukraine, it's the main focus of support because, from one side, they continue to work in war period and face a lot of problems. And I agree with Anatoly Zagorodny that how to return back scientists abroad, it will be the next step of strategy. Thank you a lot for your very kind contribution. And now, moving to our next speaker. And I kindly want to ask if representatives of the DGNEer, Thibault Charlet, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon, colleagues. I hope you can hear me well. Thank you very much for the invitation.
Yeah, and provide maybe a little bit more information about target support to the Ukrainian digital tech sector. I know that there is, is a present special action, EU for Innovation East, yes? And one of the target country of this action is Ukraine. So please provide us maybe a little bit more information about the initiative of European Commission. Thank you a lot.
Sure. So my name is Thibault Charlet, and I'm working for the European Commission in the Directorate General for Neighborhood and enlargement negotiations, DGNEer. And I am in charge of the portfolio of programmes supporting the digital transformation in the eastern partnership countries, which of course include Ukraine. So all of the programmes come under the EU for Digital umbrella, as you can see in the background. We, for instance, we have also the Eastern Partnership Connect programme, which was featured in the first presentation by the Director General of the Science Development Directorate of the Ministry of Education of Ukraine, so I want to thank him also for this. But today, I want to present you a new, a brand-new programme, which is going to start in the next, in the next few weeks. It's called EU for Innovation East. And the aim is to support the development of digital innovation in the five eastern partnership countries, meaning in Ukraine, but also in Moldova, Georgia, Armenia, and Azerbaijan. So this is a regional programme, but it has a strong focus on Ukraine and given the potential of digital innovation and of startups in the reconstruction process. So that's why we have quite an extensive budget. As for the regional programme, it's twenty-two million euro in total, twenty million euro financed by the European Union, and two million euro financed by the French government with a focus for this whole financing on Ukraine specifically. So the programme will soon start, and it will be implemented by the French Technical Cooperation Agency Expertise France. And the team of Expertise France will travel to Ukraine in September to start this inception phase, to design the roadmap of activities together with the Ukrainian stakeholders. So that leads me to, I think, the most important point of this presentation. What are the main objectives of this programme? We have four pillars, so we will work on the four pillars at the same time. The first pillar is to provide early-stage financing in each of the countries. So that means that we will set up a small early-stage fund in Ukraine, approximately one million euro, with the aim to leverage more funding in cooperation with public and private institutions. So that is still to be defined, and that will be the aim of the team travelling to Ukraine in the coming weeks. But the aim of this early-stage fund is really to support the startups in getting the first very important financing to test the ideas and to move higher up in the startup lifecycle. We will also have a focus with this early-stage fund to support startups, of course, in the field of reconstruction in Ukraine, and startups which are led by women. For us, it's very important also to go in that direction. The second pillar is to support the incubation of the startups to make sure that they can specialize in high-added-value segments, verticals, which are extremely important. When it comes to Ukraine, it could be cybersecurity, for instance. It could be any technology related to the reconstruction process or to e-health, for instance. So we will provide an envelope of grant resources to a selected number of incubators in Ukraine, to, on the one hand, to cover their operational expenses so that they can add new services such as high-quality mentoring, trainings, workshops for the startups to be able to specialize. And on the other hand, also for the incubators to launch calls for proposals, benefiting directly the startups in those highly specialized fields. And when distributing the grants to the incubators, of course, we will make sure that we can have consortium between incubators and universities. I know that there is some discussion with the Cherniviv Polytechnic University of Ukraine. So that's for us very important also to use this incubation programme to foster technology transfer in Ukraine. So first pillar is early-stage financing. Second pillar is high-performance incubation, specialization of the startups. The third pillar is to increase the partnerships between the ecosystem players in Ukraine, but also between Ukraine and the other eastern partnership countries because we think that this is a regional market, not only related, of course, to Ukraine, which is, I would say, leading the pack at the moment in terms of deep tech and technology. But of course, Ukraine has neighborhoods in the region. It's important, I think, to also focus on this. So we will try to encourage cooperation with other countries of the region, for instance, to develop women in tech network with Moldova, for instance, or other countries. Also, we will provide some support to beef up the regulatory framework to make sure that we have a startup-friendly regulatory framework all over the region. The fourth and final pillar is the international spotlight. We also want to put the spotlight on Ukrainian startups. It's very important. We all know that Ukraine is developing cutting-edge technology in various sectors. It's important to increase the visibility of this to attract more investment. So we will focus our efforts on this by bringing, for instance, Ukrainian startups, ecosystem players, delegations from Ukrainian universities to major startup events in the world and in Europe. First and foremost, we already started this in May two thousand and twenty-four, so just a few months ago, we already brought some startups to the Viva Tech Summit in Paris, which is one of the leading startup events in Europe. And we will continue in this direction to increase the matchmaking process between Ukraine and European investors and companies. And I know that our colleagues from Expertise France, because, as I said, we are providing twenty million euro of funding as European Union, and France is providing two million euro. And I know that they want really to increase this cooperation between France and Ukraine and provide a possibility, for instance, for Ukrainian startups to register on EuroQuity, which is a matchmaking platform developed by the French Public Investment Bank. But I will stop here because that's for the French representatives to tell you more in the next weeks when they travel to Ukraine. So that's for the four pillars that the programme will be supporting. Again, the programme will only start in a few weeks, but I think it's important already to flag to you the main objectives, that we will continue on the inception phase. And of course, we would very much welcome the cooperation with the stakeholders attending this meeting today to build synergies and also with our colleagues managing the Horizon Europe programmes because there is a lot to do together in this field. Thank you very much, and I will be happy to answer any question.
Yes, we have one question, and it is the next. Maybe you know that now Ukraine started the process of development a European Digital Innovation Centre network. Maybe you know that now for Ukraine selected on national level several EDIH centres. And maybe once, one month ago, we received the results from European Commission, who selected from all potential participants who applied to this call, they identify six EDIH, European Digital Innovation Hub, who will start the activities in coming months. And but it is also connected because it is digital direction. It is connected somehow with this programme, which you in the future will develop in Ukraine. And now, as I understood you, under Development Action Plan for Ukraine for this programme which you present today, I mean, EU for Innovation East. The question, maybe in this action plan, you can foresee some action or some you can foresee some action or some initiative which will help this new network which will be start the activities in coming months. I mean, to prepare some special action or special goals for support this EDIC, European Digital Innovation Hub, which will start the activities in coming months. This question.
Thank you very much. I think it's an excellent question, more comment, I would say. And well, fully taken on board, we will. The process of selecting the digital innovation hubs is not something that the engineer is involved in. It's for our colleagues in DG Connect, but we are aware of the selection of the Ukrainian entities, which was already done. And it's a great news, to be honest, that we have this. It's a strong foundation, I would say, for the clustering approach in Ukraine. And definitely, we will take that into account when designing the action plan. It's a good comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you a lot. And now we are moving to our next speaker.
I would like to introduce our next speaker. It will be Julia Apesvashenko, Senior Program Officer at the National Academy of Sciences, Engineering and Medicine. And we have some question, how the US Nas contributed to the development of science and innovation in Ukraine? And we are very interested for applying correspondence experience here. Please, Julia, take your floor.
Thank you for having me today. It's a great pleasure for me to be a part of this great panel and to see my colleagues and also to have an opportunity to talk to perfectly consulted great conference. So yes, today I'm representing National Academy of Sciences of US. It's an organization, nonprofit organization, which was established long ago in eighteen sixty-three with the vision to provide objective science innovation advice for the nation, for governmental bodies and for the whole nation. And this is something which they are doing today too. So their support for Ukraine through the full-scale innovation started very early. And I was very surprised back then when I didn't know much about this organization because I saw that early in the March twenty-twenty-two, they already started to support Ukrainian researchers. At that moment, the theory was to expectation, based in particular on support of Afghan researchers, was that Ukrainian researchers will be fleeing from the country. And one of the closest countries is Poland, and in Poland, they have Polish Academy of Sciences. So the theory was to provide funds to the Polish Academy of Sciences. And for them, they are to accommodate Ukrainian researchers. So this was like an immediate reaction, starting in May twenty-twenty-two through the Safe Passage Fund. And since then, there was some support for Ukrainian researchers, at least those who are outside Ukraine. Then during the time, the picture started to be forming more like widely strategically. And there was building of understanding that it's so important to support Ukrainian researchers inside the country because this is the majority of Ukrainian researchers, these are people who are still working there and trying to preserve science and teach students, preserve their science facilities. So there was shift in thinking and there was shift in funding instruments. For example, in PRISU, one of the instruments which you might all know is much newer. It was launched in late twenty-twenty-three. And the projects are now going where Ukrainian scientists, which are also inside the country, are supported. But the idea is to help not only Ukrainian researchers to have money for salary for their research project, but also to help them to become globally connected. So in PRISU, it's International Multilateral Partnerships for Resilience, Education and Science System in Ukraine. This is initiative which is multilateral. It's not only US on the US side. It's US National Academy of Sciences and Office of Naval Research Global and Ukraine and the PRISU National Research Foundation of Ukraine. But also, this is the Tony Research, Council of Science, also Lithuania, Poland. So it's just to create teams which are connected through the countries, which are sharing their expertise and facilities. And this, just to show you how the evolution of different support instruments changed during this time. Just to your question to the mission Anatoly Sagorodny. Yes, so this focus now is for researchers inside the country, but also to help them to build that capacity for Ukrainian science to thrive over the world in future. Also, in parallel to that, there was a lot of thinking and strategic approach on how to better support Ukrainian science innovation, but also to make it a part of conversation about Ukraine's recovery. And early stage, again, it's early stage, back in June twenty-twenty-two, leadership of National Academy of Sciences of the US, President Marsha McNatt, President of Ukrainian Academy of Sciences, Anatoly Sagorodny and the colleagues from Germany and Poland. They developed ten actionable steps to support Ukrainian science, which will widely communicate it is for the scientific, not only scientific community of the world to showcase how much important it is to support Ukrainian researchers. Also, inside the National Academy of Sciences of the US, from early, I think, spring twenty-twenty-two, one action group was established. So we have round tables, one of the round tables, it's on science diplomacy, global science diplomacy. And under it, Ukraine Reset Action Group was established, with that state for rebuilding engineering, science, education and technology in Ukraine. And this is the place where first, not only people who are working in National Academy of Sciences of the US, but also governmental officials representative of professional societies, so people who might be interested in knowing more about Ukrainian science innovation sector are regularly updated on what is going on in Ukraine. And there is a lot of conversations on how we can build this support better, how we can establish dynamical dialogue in order to figure out in this dynamical situation, what should be done next. But also, this action group produces regularly, so it's knowledge generation part of activities. So already three online workshops, workouts and one offline. Two, one workshop in September twenty-two was about rebuilding research education and innovation in Ukraine. And as it was online, both US, Ukrainian and European participants were there. Then in June twenty-twenty-three, we had workshop preserving and developing human capital in Ukraine in the research education innovation, again focused on different practices and lessons learned, but also like asking like what should be priority now and what interventions or instruments to support might be of maximal usage. And not so long ago, in May twenty-twenty-four, we had addressing environmental damage in Ukraine workshop. So it was more like topical, but still it was very wide, starting from effect for biota and ending with economical assessment of ecological damage. And many Ukrainian researchers represented a situation on a very high level. It's researchers from Ukrainian Academy of Sciences from universities, from nonprofit sector of Ukraine. And I think this conversation is something very important because it's first informing a community in the US and worldwide about what is going on and it shows how different communities might be involved in supporting Ukraine. And there was, as I mentioned, one offline workshop not so long ago, in March twenty-twenty-four, in cooperation with Simon's Foundation and ETH Zurich in Switzerland, on workshop rebuilding and strengthening Ukrainian science innovation in support of economic recovery. And thinking there was about like, okay, we are thinking about how to support Ukrainian researchers, but also this is very important to understand how we can translate research into innovation and then to support Ukrainian recovery, resilience and things which are very important, not only for future after war, but also now to keep Ukraine going. And through this conversation, there was both thinking on new instruments which should be implemented. And there, we came up with the idea of Science Innovation Fund for Ukraine, which will be, which already launched and announced by President Marsha McNatt in the first Ukrainian Innovation Days out here in Washington DC, in Ukraine House with Embassy of Ukraine in the US. She announced launch of this fund and also then in Ukraine Republic Conference in Berlin. So during next months, all the necessary steps will be taken. Already, there is commitment for thirteen million of dollars from different philanthropists here in the US. And there will be wars established, there will be priorities set. But this is just to show you how in big international organizations, which are, on the one hand, from the very first days, are supporting Ukrainian science, also the rethinking process, knowledge generation process in order to understand how to shape this instrument better, in order to meet goals through this very complex environment. So I hope that this is something useful for you today. And also, I hope that we will be engaged in dynamical discussions through building this fund and implementation of these programs through workshops and other activities because it's very important to inform world about situation in Ukraine, about challenges we are meeting and to show where is the place for our cooperation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for very informative speech. And very small, short question because we're a little bit out of the time. Is there some individual, it's a question concern future program for our scientist? And maybe you tell in some common sense and maybe you know about next, near future, about individual or common some grants for our scientists? Maybe you can tell something, tell us about this.
Yes, briefly, because of lack of time, as I already mentioned, this Science Innovation Fund for Ukraine, it will be part of the National Academy's activities regarding Ukraine. And the idea inside of it is the following, to find the instruments to support at the best, both individual researchers, themes and institution, to have their like research, innovation, capacity building, all things we discovered through these workshops, explorations and discussions. Like recently, we had a visit of delegation from National Academy of Sciences. And we met, we met a lot of colleagues for here in this panel, again, to ask and to understand better what is needed. There will be boards, there will be decision-making process to decide what are priorities. Should be thematic priorities, should be, for example, young researchers priority because there are a lot of pressing issues. So there will be some priority setting process, and we already have this money for three years. And then we will explore different instruments. But I hope we'll be able to inform and to connect with Ukrainian research communities through this way. Thank you.
Very much again. Thank you. The next our speaker will be Igor Tarano, head of the Department of Horizon Europe Office in Ukraine. And we listen about a little bit what new opportunities are open for Ukraine and under the Horizon Europe FP program. And what do we expect from the activity of the office? And what impact will it have on the development of the field of research and innovation? Please take your floor.
Thank you very much. It's a great pleasure for me and Tuna to be today with you as for this conference. Thank you very much for supporting Ukraine, for all our European Commission partners. Because it's very important, we know that we are unique project, we are initiative project in Ukraine and we totally funded one hundred percent by the European Commission. As you know, we were established in December twenty-twenty-three last year and we officially start our activity on October twenty-twenty-three. And I'd like to provide you with some figures and statistic about the current state of Ukrainian participation in Horizon twenty-twenty to compare with Horizon Europe program. Well, as you know, we have good result from the previous program, Horizon twenty-twenty. And our funding from the European Fund was around forty-eight point eighty-seven millions euro. And what is more important for Ukrainian organization during this previous program, that percentage of successful applicants, I mean about the success rate of Ukrainian organization, it was at the level nine point three percent, more higher than several research we have from different countries compared to the success rate in European Union countries. Well, the next one was this more important for Ukrainian researchers to understand how we can to improve our possibilities and knowledge and how to successfully participate in Horizon Europe program compared to the previous program, Horizon twenty-twenty. We have another different figures in this regard and the funding is compared to the previous program is a little bit less. I mean about forty-seven point eight, fifty-eight millions euro. And the success rate is compared to the success rate in the European Union's country. In Ukraine, it was fifteen point sixty-eight percent in European Union countries, fifteen point fifty-one in all countries which participated in Horizon Europe program. Well, the next one was, it's very important to understand to the different type of organization participated in the previous Horizon twenty-twenty program and Horizon Europe program. We can compare different institutions and unique participation is following. We can see that more previous funding from the Horizon twenty-twenty program was sent to the private organization. And in the Horizon Europe program, we can highlight that the higher educational institution were more successful in the Horizon Europe program. Well, the next one, what is very important for everyone to see the funding sent by the European Commission to Ukrainian institutions. I mean about research institution, I mean about innovation sector, different sectors, including SME. And we can see that most successful was also in Horizon Europe program, universities. It means that we have good result and the development of Ukrainian science and research sector moved to the right direction because the main idea to our office is to strengthen activity of Ukrainian participation in Horizon Europe program. One, you can see the key task of our office, which are indicated in the grant agreement. And we also strictly follow all of this key task in the main was to cooperate with the NCP network, which was created by the Minister of Education and Science in Ukraine, including cooperation with our office. And we still working very hard because we are going to organize the next line meeting with the NCPs in September or at the end of October to strengthen our activity. You know that we have more than twenty NCPs in Ukraine in different directions and pillars of Horizon Europe program. And what is more important, we are very appreciate the Ministry of Education and Science of Ukraine for supporting of this office and giving them some funding for their activity. What is more important for us is to provide some advice for all Ukrainian participants in Horizon Europe program. We organize our activity with different type of event. First of all, we'd like to offer to join us on the next event in Odessa.
We have seen still the first slide of your.
No, 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 I'm still here. I'm sorry, maybe some technical issues. How now? Do you see the key task of our office right now?
It's okay.
It's okay, right, good. I'd like to use the minimum of the screen because some technical issues don't allow to show the full screen, it seems to me. Well, let's come back to our main task. As I mentioned before, we are trying to organize our activity with all NCPs in Ukraine, with all participants for Horizon Europe program, including SMEs, including research institution, including different type of organization. But what is more important and what we expected, what we expected with all our activity? First of all, we try to share knowledge about Horizon Europe program using different types of event. We organized many times from the other activity, I mean about from October twenty-twenty-three. First of all, in four days, the next one is events for dissemination and also workshops, training, different types. And every time we change the program of our events because we tried to put all necessary request from Ukrainian research and innovation society. And we kindly invite everyone to follow our webpage who are interested in participation of Horizon Europe program, also to all of our page in social media. First of all, we like to highlight that the next our event will be organized in Odessa in September twenty-twenty-four. It will be in hybrid format and we kindly invite us to join us at this event. in September twenty twenty-four. It will be in hybrid format and we kindly invite us to join us at this event. All the necessary information about the current calls open for Ukrainian organization, you can find follow our QR code indicated in the last slide. And for the all future participant, we'd like to inform that we have currently open two hundred thirty-one call. And we also expect twenty-three forthcoming calls. It means that everyone can find all the necessary information about the current possibility to participate in Horizon Europe program. Also, you can remember that we are open for future cooperation and we try to explain all details about different calls for all the participant. If you have any request, if you need more additional information, please send your request to our official mailbox and really send your answer as soon as possible to give a new chance to be more active, to be more successful in Horizon Europe program. Thank you once more. I'd like to stop at this moment and hope you will follow other the page. We encourage you to be more active in Horizon. Fine music.
Maybe it's the voice adjust the music pause for our inspiration. Some for smiling. So we can continue, I think. Let's continue our interesting presentation. It's, it was perfect.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so thank you a lot again for your very informative and very valuable presentation. And it's interesting your opinion, how can sustainable development be ensured in the country's restoration? Maybe you can some idea, you can give us some ideas?
And maybe I will add one more question which we received before our session. As I know now open, it seems that we lose. Igor Tarano, Igor Tarano, are you with us?
Yes, I am still here with you.
A period from screen, that's why I'm worried a little bit. As I know, in the autumn will be special call for Ukrainian scientists who can join to current EU project which already started. So as I understood, each researcher, which it will be need, it will be not need to prepare a new project. It will be need to find some team who already have new Horizon project and possible to join to this team. And as I understood, this special call already is open in the frame of Horizon Europe. Do you know something about this call? And maybe you'll provide a little bit more information.
Thank you very much for your very important questions. Yes, we know about this call and we know that Ukrainian organizations right now is trying to establish consortium. You made, you mean about consortium, yes. And we, we know that several universities and several organizations from Ukraine will join to this call. But what is more important, what is more important? You have to remember that we have standard requirements for participants for Horizon Europe calls, different types. You have to create a consortium using some countries from the member states countries and associated countries. But what is more important, that you have also to think about your role as this consortium. If you have no experience participated in the previous Horizon Europe calls, it would be better for you to join the consortium with strength, with strong previous participants, with whom who had previous experience and successful calls in the Horizon Europe program. It's very important because you have to prepare only your part, your part of proposal. But if you are going to be that coordinated, it more demanded from yourself. You have to coordinate all the consortium.
Thank you a lot. And maybe you can leave in the chat the link for this call because we.
For sure, for sure. In a moment, I will leave the link with all the necessary information and the details, outcomes, etc. regarding to this call. For a moment, two minutes.
Thank you a lot. Thank you a lot. And now we are moving to our last speaker. It will be representative of business, representative of the innovation organization, which they start from innovation technology. And now it is be a big innovation startup which move to form of small medium enterprise. They now have quite interesting new technology, which already on the market. And they sell this technology, this scientific product to a lot, to many universities in Europe, in Ukraine, in other countries. So I kindly invite Stefan O'Dowey to provide short presentation about maybe ideas how to be successful on the way, on the way from scientific idea to innovation product. A key factor for success. Take your floor.
Hello, Alina. Hello, everyone. I presume you can all hear me. Firstly, thank you to Alina for the opportunity to talk here today. As Alina mentioned, we Corvus Technology are a SME manufacturer based in the UK, manufacturing a scientific instruments, which are physical vapor deposition instruments, which are used for producing thin films on different substrates for R and D purposes. The scientific instrument industry within the UK is a multi-billion pound industry and is primarily a result of a strong academic industry in the UK. A large portion of the scientific instrument companies within the UK are spinoffs from academia, particularly around the south between the Oxford, Cambridge and London areas. So I'm going to talk a little bit today, just, just briefly, because I know we are running over, just on the idea, how the idea for the product arose and how you can implement an idea to a successful business. So PVD systems before the formation of Corvus Technology have been manufactured in a certain way for a number of years. And they're primarily cylindrical in shape or box chambers. And almost all the manufacturers on the market manufacture in this way. And within this industry and this, this technique, it results in a rigid system with limited flexibility. So at Corvus Technology, while our instrument was not a spinoff directly from a university, we are a spinoff from a previous organization who was making a product similar to the existing competitors. And within the organization, we developed an idea where rather than have a rigid system, which provided an inflexible solution to end customers, we produced what's called an open frame architecture PVD system. And you can see the, the sort of a evolution of the product from the left, which was the original inflexible design, which is similar to the, the competition, where you have a welded chamber with a number of fixed ports, which gives you limited functionality. And we thought about the idea of developing a completely flexible solution. And that is where we came across the idea of this hexagonal structure, which you can see on the bottom right. And what this means is that rather than having a fixed system, every single side panel of the unit, you can remove the panel. And this means that it's completely flexible, completely upgradable and future proof for people's labs. So when it comes to scientific instrument implementation and business in general, before you begin a, to set up a business, there are a number of key tests that you should be evaluating. The first one is, you know, does the idea solve a problem or present an advantage? Of course, with this product, we knew that the ability to, to upgrade more easily or future proof meant that it did. Does the product have a unique selling point? With our product, again, yes, because it's highly modular. It doesn't, if you are starting a new business, particularly in the scientific instrumentation sector, it doesn't need to have a USP and or not, let's say, a technical USP. A USP could be a price. You could produce a me-too product and have your USP as a lower price or potentially better customer service. The key test though is, is there a market for the solution, particularly in the scientific instrument sector? There has been, and I've been involved in this for, for over twenty years, a number of spinoffs from university where academia have developed something which they believe there is a market for. And they've spent a lot of time developing a product and spent a lot of time and money to find something that really there is no market for. So this is the crucial test is, is there a market for this solution? Is it worth going after this? In our case, of course, the PVD instrument sector is a, you know, worldwide is a sort of forty billion sterling market worldwide and growing. And then another thing to consider is the downsides, do they supersede the advantages? So when you have your idea, you know, one of the key things to think of is, you know, does this, does the advantage of that solution overweigh what are the disadvantages? So for example, if there is an additional cost in producing this solution and the advantage isn't that significant, then, you know, you have to seriously consider whether that is a product that's worth or a development which is worth entertaining. Within our, in our case, of course, it was a key, the key thing was because we have additional panels was the verification of the technical specification, which we, we know from testing that we could achieve. And what are the costs of bringing the idea to market? Of course, there are different ways that you can, you can fund it. But you have to ensure that whatever you are producing is, you can make it to an acceptable cost. Because even if you haven't the advantage, if your product is significantly more expensive than the competition, then it is a very challenging product to market. And how do you deliver this, this business, whether this is a scientific instrument or another one, or the type of product? So the key thing, particularly in the scientific instrument sector, is to set up reference labs and build partnerships with universities and academia. As I mentioned, a lot of scientific instrument companies have spun out from academia. So they already have local partnerships. But if it is a, if it is not a spinoff, then my recommendation is to set up a key reference lab. So what we did in the, the founding of Corvus is we set up a reference lab with Imperial College in London. And this is quite important when you're a startup because one of the biggest challenges is customers buying from an unknown company and having a trusted name such as Imperial College to call on to, to give a reference for your product is quite key. Another thing which is, is valuable here is that when you collaborate with a local university, they can actually help you with your development. So they can provide ideas, they can test the test prototypes. So collaboration with, with academia is key. Customer service is everything. I mean, that's a fairly obvious one, but particularly in the scientific instrument sector where a lot of your business will be done by word to word, people talking at conferences like your conference, recommending the product. So ensuring you, you provide solid customer service is, is important. The next one I have down is building a top team. So as your company grows, a key factor is building a top team. If you look at any of the most successful businesses, it's really not the guy at the top who's, who's the key driver, it's the people around him. There's a famous saying in business that it's the, it's the CEO or the managing director who drives the bus. But it's the most, the most important people are the people who are on the bus because they are actually the ones doing the work and doing the, the development and the innovation. And market effectively, so focus on your core message, focus on what is strong about your product. If you are producing a me-too product, but you're able to produce it cheaper than other competition within the world, then, then focus on that factor. The next one I have is follow the market. So a key thing is to make sure that, you know, you, you follow that market and don't be led down, led down routes which aren't going to be profitable routes for you. This is particularly true in scientific instrument companies where a lot of the companies are led by initial founders who often come out of academia and they can produce great products and they have great ideas. But making sure that you focus your time and your energy on something which is valuable and is worthwhile is, is key. Rather than spending a lot of time producing something for not that much reward. And finally, stay focused, stay within the idea that you have and your niche area. You can spread your resources thinly, but that won't, won't lead to, to greater success. Okay, and that's the end of my presentation. So it's been a whistle stop tour. If anyone has any questions or wants to reach out to me for advice, feel free to on my email.
Thank you a lot, Stefan. And as, as I understood, you are open for cooperation with Ukrainian scientists, yes? If they wanted to buy your equipment, they can, they can contact with you and something like this, yes?
Yes, exactly, Alina. We are, we are open to discussions with many universities. We, as you know, we now have a system in the Institute of Physics in Ukraine. And later on this year, we will be providing a system to a drone company in Ukraine for their own research. So we are open to collaboration. So yeah, please do reach out to either me or to one of my colleagues.
Thank you a lot. And it was our last speaker and nice presentation about practical, with practical advice, how to create innovation product and how to move from idea to business product to innovation product. I wanted from my side to tell everyone who took part in one, in our session, thank you. And I wanted, I wanted to mention that we now have a session which was focused on role of science and innovation in support and recovery of Ukraine. And from my side, it's very important to realize that a lot international organizations, that European Commission, a lot funds and other networks continue support Ukrainian scientists. And in the nearest future, I hope that we will stop and we all together can more active to move to our and implement our innovation strategy, which is focused on develop new infrastructure to support new project, to support new innovation products. And we all together can in the nearest future to reach our goal. And now we return back to our main program because each of you know that a special session was organized in the frame of our main event. It is Wealth International Conference Nano twenty twenty-four. We a little bit late from the main program. And now we switch to our main program and continue plenary session. And I wanted to invite moderator of this session, Leonid. One moment. One moment. The moderator of this session will be Evgeny. He will take floor from me and will continue support our conference and invite invited speakers. Thank you a lot for everyone who took part in special sessions, the role of science and innovation for recovery of Ukraine. In the chat, you can find also information, as I understood, about the program, which is open for Ukrainian scientists, so you can copy it. It's because link for conference and special session was the same. It means that we continue, you don't need to switch to another event. We just continue this event, I mean, plenary session of Nano twenty twenty two. But we a little, a little bit late from program for about thirty minutes. Thank you a lot.
Thank you very much from me too for participation and contribution.